Welcome to the Village Board Meeting of the Mayor and the Board of Trustees for Wednesday, September 8th, 2021. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Glory Outwater, 40-year resident of the village, passed away, and former village police officer Mike Mazacon passed away this month. Mike provided long and faithful service to the residents of the village and community.
And also Joanne Chase.
And Joanne Chase, you're right. Thank you. Any recognitions, announcements, clerk?
Recognition of the 9/11 event, I'm sure most of you, if not all of you, have seen the flag, the place that volunteers put together this past weekend for the 9/11 event coming up this coming weekend. It starts, I believe, at 7:00?
Yes.
7:00 PM on Saturday.
7:00 to 8:00?
Yeah, it'll be about an hour or so. Good or late.
It begins at 7:00. It was your park. They put a lot of effort into it, and it really looks great. I'm sure it'll be in the local newspapers.
Maybe.
Well, I'll call them.
Okay. Okay, roll call?
Mayor Serino.
Present.
Trustee Sadati, absent.
At the work, ma- uh, clerk, clerk, he had to work.
Had to work. Trustee Ponti.
Because of the hurricane with the, with the trains.
Trustee Neznik.
Here.
Trustee Huber.
Present.
Trustee Ruffin.
Present.
Trustee LaRocella.
Here.
Village Attorney Wallace.
Here.
Action on minutes, August 11th, 2021.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Adam. August 25th, Village Board Meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I know the Finance Committee has signed off on bills. I assume everything's in order, so there's a budget amendment with this. We'll do that after this. A motion to approve the bills as...
I'll make that motion.
And a second by trustee Ponti. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There's a few budget amendments. As clerk cards would say, this is just housekeeping. So, motion to accept that, these housekeepings.
I'll make that. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie. We have a resolution for a CFA consolidated funding application for New York Main Street Project.
Want me to read it?
Uh, yeah.
Resolution in support of the submission of a consolidated funding application, CFA, for HCR, New York Main Street Project, whereas the Village of Wappinghurst Falls Board of Trustees agreed to support the Wappinghurst Falls consolidated funding application for the HCR, New York Main Street Project, to enhance and restore a historic building located at 2755 East Main Street. And whereas the Village of Wappinghurst Falls recognizes the need for this restoration after a severe fire ravaged a row of historic buildings in 2017, damaging some and destroying others in the heart of the village center. And whereas the Village of Wappinghurst Falls recognizes that the damage to these historic buildings has affected the village community both economically and spiritually as our historic identity continues to erode. And whereas the CFA will focus on acquiring funding, funding for improving the historic 2755 East Main Street building. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wappinghurst Falls has concluded that they are in support for this Wappinghurst Falls application to New York State Consolidated Funding Application Program for the HCR, New York Main Street Grant. So, I would need someone to make a motion to approve submitting this resolution.
I'll make it.
Second. Trustee Ponti. Roll call vote. Mayor Serino.
Aye.
Trustee Huber.
Aye.
Trustee Neznik.
Aye.
Trustee Ruffin.
Aye.
Trustee Ponti.
Aye.
Trustee LaRocella.
Abstain.
Susten- uh, abstain? Trustee Sadati, absent. Carrie. Want to go out of sequence?
Yeah, go ahead.
The mayor would like to go out of sequence from tonight's printed agenda to move to an item on the agenda called approval hourly pay rate increase for Highway Foreman Polakowski. So can we have a motion to move out of sequence?
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie.
This item was submitted by trustee LaRocella.
Yeah, so, just for clarity, the, what I'm asking is not to change the pay rate, it's to move the employee up in steps, which I think is different than looking to restructure the, um, the pay rate at the current step. As I've discussed with everybody previously in executive session, I think that the employee, I think the landscape right now with, you know, cost of living increase changing from 3% to 5%, you know, inflation, things like that, the job market, the fact that they're giving sign-on bonuses on money at potential candidates, it's our duty to protect the village and ensure that the people that are currently here working hard and giving their best and making, you know, us the best we can be, that they're feeling supported. And so, based on a series of instances that I've had working with the Highway Department, when being asked to remedy several situations from residents in my ward and in other wards, Mr. Pajee and his whole team have, have, you know, done really great work. Several of the things were, have been told to me by residents, whether it's true or not, that they've asked for these things to be done in the past and they haven't. Mr. Polakowski seems to have the respect of his superiors and also has the respect of the people that are working for him, and he certainly has my respect and appreciation. So that's why I'm asking this. I've asked Mr. Cruzey to come. I also have spoken with Mr. Pajee, and he had given me a document in writing that I gave to all of the trustees, which I hope you had an opportunity to review. I don't really see a reason to obstruct this effort. I've said it in private, I'll say it again, I don't benefit in any way, there's nothing, you know, coming back to me on this. This was just something that I believe as a person, as a private business owner, in how we go about working with our employees or independent contractors, and I don't perceive this being the only opportunity to do something like this. So, I don't know if there's, if the board wants to ask him questions of Mr. Cruzey or if Mr. Cruzey wants to offer up any information. I did ask him because there was some concerns raised, and so I felt to be clear, so we don't, this is a three-month thing I've been talking about, so I'd like to try to be decisive and move ahead.
I'd like to just instruct the board that if they're going to be discussing anything related to labor relations or anything under the, the village, the village's CBA agreements with its unions, that might be better discussed within executive session, and that is a ground to go into the executive session. So, if you'd like to table this to the, to that aspect of the meeting, I would recommend that, unless you want to talk about general, across-the-board negotiations in the future.
Well, I don't know if that item really falls into play here. I think what we're talking about is...
Just moving up a step.
Is correct.
Man, I was officially asking for two, based on my conversation with Mr. Pajee and Mr. Cruzey. That's what I was, that's what I was intending to ask. You know, if nobody has a problem with it, I'm prepared to make the motion to do that vote, and maybe there's no other discussion we need to have. I've had a bit of it, but...
I think, again, I'd recommend that we discuss this in executive session. I sent an email to everybody regarding this particular...
So, for purposes of time, because Mr. Cruzey made an effort to come here and does have somewhere to, he does need to leave by 8:00. Are we able to go into an executive session now and then come back into another open meeting? This is important to me, and I've been working hard at this, and I'd like to hammer this out.
Can I have a quick question for you? When is your contract up?
That would be May 31st of 2023.
May, I'm sorry, May?
23th. May 31st, 2023.
23, correct. I'll be happy to answer any questions, or if you do want to go into executive session, I'll be happy to discuss the circumstance with Tom, with the board.
So should I make a mo- I mean...
Yeah, make the motion.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carrie.
Instead of having to pack up, let's go upstairs.
I don't think we're going to be that long in executive session, either.
No, but, yeah, instead of having inconvenience, we should all go upstairs, is what I'm trying to say.
Yep, I agree.
Okay. We'll go upstairs.
Okay.
Did you get the keys?
The Wa-.
The board has entered executive session. Please stand by, the meeting will resume when they return.
Yeah, it's bad.
We're there.
Read the...
Unless anybody has any further questions, thank you for allowing me some time to talk to the board. Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Good night.
Okay, so, you have...
I have a motion, trustee Huber, to leave the executive session, return to the regular session.
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Ruffin.
Aye.
Sorry, bud.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Carrie.
Carrie.
Based on consultation in executive session, did we have a motion for this pay increase?
Motion to table.
Did we have a motion, or was it just going to go to...
There was a motion on the floor from trustee LaRocella that never got seconded.
Motion to rescind?
Is that what council wants me to do?
So you're going to take, take it back?
Okay, well, I understand what the word means, I'm just making sure, is that what I'm supposed to do?
Yeah, you're not giving up any right to, to raise the motion again at the appropriate time.
But now is not appropriate, okay? Motion to rescind.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, I think the appropriate motion would be to at least table that.
This is going to be tabled to the discussion meeting on the 23rd?
9th.
Or, oh, no, wait, it's always the last Wednesday, so this, that's...
29th.
That's the fifth Wednesday, so the 29th. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to go back to the regular scheduled agenda. Which we left off. We have items for discussion from Cindy Latino, put some...
Yep.
Concerns together.
Take care of Cindy Latino, 14 Adams Street Law Factors. I think we've already, you've already taken care of the first one that I was concerned about, and I just wanted to clarify to you, we got, we had a request to amend the, you had already passed that resolution back, I want to say in June, maybe July. We, we were contacted by the group that we made the application to for the recommendation that we go after a specific one, and that was why we needed to amend that resolution. So, thank you very much. Bain Park, and this, this requires a long and lengthy discussion. So, to start with, Cory and I had a conference call with Nancy Clark on the Monday after the workshop meeting. And to, Cory had made reference to, we were going to clarify with her the cost of the bid and the cost of the other things that she had outlined in the report that she had sent to you for that workshop meeting. And, so, you know, I think, you know, she clarified to us what the additional, you know, engineering costs were in terms of, we need to go out to bid on the installation of the equipment. So, you know, I'm so, I think I've talked on this so many different times, I don't know where the board is at this point in time with understanding what happened with the grants and where we are with the project and everything. So, may, if I'm saying something that you don't recall, that we've had a conversation about, or that, you know, you're unaware of, please stop me and I will backtrack and explain. So, we got notification quickly in, at the end of July regarding, we have two grants for Bain Park, one that we received in 2019, and then the one we received this year in 2021. The one in 2019, we had, was initially for us to buy playground equipment and...
And that was for $100,000, Cindy?
That was for $100,000, okay? When we, so, we started the process of looking at playground equipment, we looked at several companies, so we decided on one particular company, Compan, because in 2016, I think that's the date, Craig, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, New York State put in a, what's called a piggyback bid law that allowed you to piggyback off of a bid for pricing from a company that bid on a similar project within the county, or within the state, I think it is. So, we piggybacked off a bid that the town of LaGrange used to install playground equipment at Freedom Park out in LaGrange. So, that was how Compan got to be used as the company. We came in with, we asked them for three, I had sat down with catalogs at Summer Camp, we had had various meetings with some other places too, to discuss with them a variety of different playground equipment, and asked Compan for three designs that they gave us. There was a public hearing on those designs in January of, I'm going to get confused now. January, I believe in January of 2020, I get confused on my dates with COVID and stuff. So, I was not here for that meeting, I was in Florida, but it was held, we did it on a Saturday, the Compan rep came and he made a presentation, then we moved all of those designs, we took public comment at that, we moved all three designs to the Grinnell Library and allowed people to vote on them. Those designs were specifically made for inclusive playgrounds, and I'm, you know, which meant that it's a combination of, yes, are there elements of it that address special needs, yes, but it is an inclusive playground, meaning that anybody could use these type of, these type of equipment. So, we had those three designs in Grinnell, we had them voted on, there was a particular one that was, was selected that received the highest number of votes. We put that information out to people and then took comments back as to if there was concerns about the particular equipment, if people felt that we hadn't, they were very concerned about whether or not we had addressed a particular need. We took those comments into consideration and went back to Compan and said, could we switch out a couple of different pieces of equipment for something else that people had raised concern about? And I think you brought that up at a meeting, Adam, with regards to that, you know, so we really did do our due diligence in terms of trying to address those needs, but again, I'm going to focus on that it's an inclusive playground, it's not a special needs playground, it's an inclusive playground. So, we moved, we moved ahead and then of course, you know, COVID hit, and that slowed everything down. And so, we had, we weren't really sure when we would be able to put the playground equipment in, so the conversation that we had had at that point in July, and I believe it was in July of 2020, that we needed to have a contract signed to purchase the equipment so that they would hold the price that we had from them, you know, we didn't want to have to, you know, order the equipment into the next cycle because it would have meant a substantial jump in the price of it. So by moving ahead and asking them to sign a contract then, we saved about $25,000.
And that's just on the equipment only?
That's just on the equipment, okay? So, going forward, we, so, the deal we had with Compan was that we would put down $10,000 in good faith, they did not, you know, they didn't push the issue with us, they just said, okay, if you want to do that, that's fine, because we were signing the contract. And so, we went forward and with our plan, we also at that time then submitted a second grant application for funding to install the playground. So, which we were awarded this couple of months ago and stuff.
So 2019 was to pay for it and 2021 was to install it?
Yeah.
And how much was that one for 2021?
I'm sorry.
How much was the one for 2021?
$100 as well? Yeah, both $100,000 off, okay? And we moved ahead because we were 100% positive we were going to get funding for the, the grant, based on, Mark Monero came out with a huge group to look at the project and stuff, and it was on his strong push that we went after the extra money for the installations. So, okay, so we move ahead, and now the COVID restrictions are starting to lift, and Duchess County is starting to pull the contracts together from the 2019. So we get this call at the end of July telling us that because of where this particular funding comes from the federal government, we cannot use the piggyback law, and we could not piggyback on a bid from, from LaGrange. So that, you know, we already had the playground equipment at that point, we have it, it's in storage down at Ad Space right now. So we are, we've already purchased it, so, but we cannot use any of that money from the original grant to pay for that equipment. So I came in and had a conversation with the mayor and we...
So you're saying the original money from 2019, the $100,000 that was given to us to play, to pay for the playground could no longer be used to pay for the playground?
It cannot be used for the equipment, that's the only thing it cannot be used for.
But that was the original purpose of the money, was to...
The original purpose of the money was to purchase equipment and install a playground, yeah.
So, now that our equipment has not been paid for, what is the 2019 allowable to do?
We can use it, anything for it in the park, so that's what they clarified.
Anything in the park?
That we were doing in the park, so the, it can go towards more installation.
But it can't, when you say anything in the park, it's not for equipment, it's not for things to play on, so what does that mean?
No, it's not for things to play on, but it is for putting in the stuff, it is for the surfacing of the playground.
So it's labor.
It is for the fencing around it, the labor, the, the labor, the installation labor of it.
So now we go from, so now not only our 2019, but our 2021 have both turned into not being able to pay for the playground?
No, not being able to pay for the playground equipment.
To pay for the equipment, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, not, not being able to pay for the equipment?
Right.
And only able to pay for labor and, you said fencing?
Fencing, would, you know, whatever we need to...
Blackout work, the blacktop along?
Yes.
Engineering?
The parking lot?
Engineering is a soft cost, and no, you can't use it for engineering.
So basically, getting the playground ready for the equipment is the only thing that this money can be used for?
Putting the equipment in and pouring the surf, the surfacing is included in it. So that was, that was a good part of the grant too, was the playground surf.
So now we have 200, so all the 200,000 is there?
It's 200,000 dollars, yeah, so that 200,000...
And we have to come up with $64,000 to pay for the equipment?
We have to come up with 60, no, it's, it was 58.5, I think.
48.
Well, 48, because we've already paid $10,000.
And that came out of our pocket because we, it didn't come out of the...
Came out of restricted funds, yes.
The restricted funds.
Right, because that's an eligible use.
And there's 48,000 remaining...
That we need to pay.
On that item, just that item.
That item.
So, we had enough restricted fees to pay for the equipment. So, you have basically...
$200,000 to set it up.
Correct.
And, and you expect it to be how much total?
For the, the playground? Well, when we had initially talked, I thought it would be that, that much, but we didn't have, I think I came back, planned to you back in the spring and said, I thought we would be a little bit over, because we had thought we would get 150, we only got 100, so I thought we would be $50,000 short, it's almost, it's almost as small.
That's what I was about to try to say, it seems like it's a wash, it's just we're taking money from one place.
It pretty much is, but I'm, you know, I'm just trying by explanation to tell you what it's going on and stuff like that.
It seems that you're just taking it from one account because you can't take it from the other, and then you pay it from the others and the other, and it's an even draw, right?
Okay, so...
But that'll get us to what point?
That'll get us to the point, so, that, that will get us to be able to put it in at this point, to pay off the equipment and start moving ahead.
Well, that...
The extra expense...
That's not including in paying off the equipment, because that's not part of the 200,000, the 200,000...
The 200,000 would be used for...
That will get us...
Putting the equipment into the ground.
Installation.
Installation.
Right.
It would be the pathways going into the playground, we had looked to be doing some small park, where we were looking to do a lot more parking, but this would make for smaller, more in the parking, handicap parking probably early.
So, so the only thing other than taking the 48,000 out of the restricted funds would be funding the engineering?
Yeah.
And do we have a number on that?
Well, according to what Nancy put out to us, so I think she sent you a detailed email, because I got the detailed email, she, it would be requiring $8,000 to do the drainage work on that area for, moving forward with the park for sewer water, whatever the drainage thing is. The bid package will probably cost us $10,000 to go out to bid. So that would be, you know, her compiling it, there's umpteen meanings that have to happen between the county and us and stuff, creating the bid package... happen between the county and us and stuff, creating the bid package, putting, making the bid package available. But I mean, when she explained to us in detail what, you know, I thoroughly understand why, how it would amount to be $10,000. There's a lot of work involved in doing this. So primarily that bid also has to be made available to women and minority owned businesses. That's, that's the glitch. Otherwise we would have, we would have been okay with the bid that we had from the other one, but that, they couldn't, they couldn't guarantee that that's what the bid went out on the La Grange project for. We couldn't document that. Okay? So what I'm seeing right now is KC, you know, KC Engineering needs some direction as to what do you want them to do at this point in time? They've already done the overall plan. They still have to do a seeker on the, the project and stuff, but they need some direction as to how, what do you want to do with this $200,000? How far do you want them to take the scope? You know, what do you want them to do at this point? Because they, they're not getting any answer from you. They're not going to move ahead to create a bid package for us unless you have an approval for them to do it.
Well, I think we do have to extend the first grant, correct?
Yeah, we have, that's one of the things we have to do is, I think that's just a formality with the county.
Yeah.
They were expecting us to be able to do anything. Right now, the way the contract's written, it ends as of, we're supposed to have bought the equipment and installed it as of the end of this year. And there's just no way it's going to happen. There's absolutely no way that, and that equipment will, right now we're looking at probably early spring of July.
So KC Engineering wants direction of what you, we want to do with the 200,000?
Right.
So they're going to, they're going to design something?
No, the design's already been done.
Right.
What she's, what she's going to do is put out the specific information in a bid package as to what parts of that project we want to have.
Okay. Well, I was going to get to that.
Okay.
Okay. So let's tell them, because they seem to always go over on costs, what's a fair number that we want to spend? We got 200. What, what's the fair number we want to spend at this point? 180?
I think, so we're, we're trying to put together, for them to be able to put together a bid package. I want to be, like, I don't want to spend the 200,000 and then, you know, we, something happens and then we don't have contingency. So we would need to have, do like 180 and have 20, 20,000 as contingency.
You know what I'm saying? We can spend up to 200, but if you, if you do the bid package and it's 200 and-
Something goes wrong.
Yeah, I have to call that.
So if you did it for 180, that's a 10% kind of like contingency built into the bid package.
Is 20,000 enough for that?
On, on, on the contingency? Nah. They usually use 10% contingency. But she needs to have a number so that she can then size up the costs to the best of their ability.
And she needs written approval from, from you guys for her to move ahead. I think she would allow me to say to her, this is the items that we're looking for, but the village board has approved you go out to bid for this amount of money-
Right.
For this installation.
Yeah. So for between 175 and 180, is that what we looking for?
Yeah, sure. 175.
175.
Is your 15?
This is, but we're paid up. This is a new, this is a new phase, right? This is a new phase with, with-
This is a new phase and she helped, she helped on-
We paid through. We're, we paid through so far with that, right?
I don't know. I think her original bid was, her original price for the design of the, the park and everything was about 64. I don't know that she's billed for all of that yet.
Well, she hasn't done the whole thing, right?
No, there's some stuff still left on it to, you know, but there's a lot that she has done. And I'm to be perfectly honest to say to you, she, she has been so good in terms of working with Cory and I and we did not get billed for a lot of the things that we, you know, consulted with her at and, you know, jumbled around and she's had, you know, she's been in contact with Compan and stuff to, to get stuff done. We have, we have not gotten billed for and we are not getting billed.
So to answer your question, the, the budget was 64,400 and billing to date is 38,815.
Right, but ultimately the question is, and there's nothing, she hasn't, doesn't align-
So, so to go forward and put out this bid-
Right.
And get the rest of the work done, is that adding to the 64,000 or is that work that's already within the 38?
No, there's two, she, she sent you an email. And if you read that email-
So is it just the eight and the 10 going closer to the 64? Is that what you're referred, was that what that was referring to?
I'm sorry, excuse me?
So the 38,000 that's already been spent?
Right.
Going forward, given her, given the 175,000?
The seeker will be still in that, which she hasn't billed for yet because it hasn't been included yet. And I'm not exactly sure what, what, a couple of, I know the things that she had, that are not included in that scope. She's very specific in that email, you look at the email that she sent you. She's very specific about, you know, what was not included in that, that bid. I'm sorry, I'm just, of course, and she detailed it. She sent it to you before the board meeting, so.
Right, I see, I see the 8,000.
8,000 and it's 10,000 for the bid package. And then she talks about KC overseeing, if you want them overseeing the project or something. I don't know that that's necessary. The last part of it means that they would have somebody on site. I don't know that that's absolutely necessary.
Yeah, and at the cost of $20,000.
Well, that's the contingency that she's talking about.
No, okay.
In case there was a problem or something that-
Well, no, it says here involvement during the construction phase will be an additional 10% of $20,000.
I think that's, that's what they usually use is they take 10% of whatever the project is and that's what they flow to you, say if something comes up that this is a possibility that we would be charged.
So I think, getting back to the original question, 175 to 180 would be a number that we could tele, telegraph to, to her. And, and, and then-
And if we do have money left over that we haven't used from the grant, you have done work in that part that we can charge off to it.
In kind service.
So when he did the whole thing with the fencing and the bird and all that kind of stuff, that is work that we could, we can, uh-
Well, we have to get those numbers, but as you know, the way these grants work, we got to spend our money first before we get reimbursed. So while we're in, it's, it's not like we got the 200,000 in hand and we're just going to spend it. We got to spend ours to get what they awarded. So while we are still in a favorable cash position relative because we haven't, we haven't done, we haven't gotten into April and May and February to pay bills, we have that money. We pay, we, we, we use that money and then when you do the work, we can submit, just keep submitting bills to them and it's Duchess County, they should pay within six weeks. To the best of, they should reimburse back in six weeks. So we really can't go past the end of January because then the, the cash flow, you're just burning through the budget year and then you don't have the money. You don't have the money to pay for the stuff because it's just not there.
I say 175.
Is that a motion?
I'll second you.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie.
And the board is fine with my creating a list to her of what are the priorities?
Yeah, if you could just, you know, obviously we need to-
And I will absolutely send you a copy of exactly, you know, what I'm looking to do and stuff.
Cindy, can you provide me with the contractor or the, or the contract documents for the piggybacking?
Okay.
The approved, it's off the state approved contractor list or is it a contract?
Um, I think it was the, I think it was the contract itself that we have, I'll, I have to go back and-
Yeah, I'm going to have to get that.
I have to fund it. We'll go back to our funders.
We'll need that information.
Okay.
So we can avoid the procurement.
And then one of the other things I wanted to talk to you about was, uh, a couple of things. Number one, that we've had that equipment since last December and it's in storage at Ad Space. I don't know if he will, he's been, we've, we've been storing it for no cost and I'm not sure that I can push him to, to continue to do that. So I'm putting it out there that there's a possibility that he will, number one, either ask us to move it and we need to find someplace else to store it, or that he would charge us something to be able to store it.
How, how, how big is this equipment? Is it in pieces?
It's in pieces. It's in pieces. It's fairly, one piece is extremely large because it came as one piece and that would be the carousel that's for wheelchairs and-
Perhaps boathouse can store it.
I don't know if we'd get in-
Well, there's that garage bag.
Yeah, well, well.
Large piece. Just a possibility.
Oh yeah, then you have Christmas ornaments, big Christmas wreaths.
Have they moved them yet?
I don't know. I don't think so.
No.
I don't think that they've moved yet.
You got banners too.
And banners. So we'll have to do a clean out of the, of the boathouse there at least to get the carousel there in that garage.
It's only a garage door. How big is this carousel? How many feet in diameter?
Yeah, I think it's at least 12.
Oh, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I put in here to ask for approval for us to submit a grant that we've had going for quite a while now. It's called the Downtown Revitalization Initiative. This is round five is due in, on September 15th. The grant is already written. It just needed to be updated to show things that we had initially put into it to look at. The total pool of money is usually about $20 million. They pick, they can choose to pick one area to give it to, one city to give it to, or they can choose to break it up into several projects. So nothing ventured, nothing gained. I mean, I, I don't think it's, but I do need a resolution from the board allowing us to submit the law.
Not a resolution. You can do it with a vote.
I can just do it with a vote? Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
You can do it right now with a vote.
Okay, so.
So we need a, you need a motion to approve to submit the DRI Downtown Revitalization Initiative for round five.
I'll make the motion to submit the DRI.
I'll second it.
Resolution on round five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie.
Now, we know that Carrie's leaving next week. It's his last day. Who's going to do all of this?
I'm going to discuss items in executive session.
Okay.
And that was actually going to be my last question to you was to, just to say to you that I hope that you will consider having somebody in a position as a grant writer, if only to close out what we have already. You know, we have a whole lot out there right now and I'm sure, I don't even know, Derek, I don't think you've mentioned it, that we did just receive a grant, you know, a shared services grant with town of Poughkeepsie and the city of Poughkeepsie, a water one to replace the water meters in the first ward and stuff. That was a sizable grant. I believe Scott Williams wrote that. That's not long ago that grant went in. So I'm pretty sure that's what we did.
Yeah.
It was a, a good sized grant. And there's more coming down the pike, so I hope that you will at least have a plan. If you're not going to have somebody, that you have a plan for how you're going to be able to manage this stuff going forward.
That one that you're talking about with Rocky, did that happen?
Yeah. I'm pretty sure he did. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. The next item was a discussion on West Main Street sidewalk collapse. We have a resolution. I can read. You're ready? You ready? Resolution number 22, 2021. Resolution authorizing the hiring of an attorney to bring a declaratory judgment against the village's insurance carrier in connection with the retaining wall collapse located at 2682 West Main Street, New York State Route 9D in the Village of Wapsters Falls. Whereas on September 1st, 2020, while performing excavation work relating to the replacement of a natural gas main, an employee of Central Hudson damaged a retaining wall owned by the village located in the vicinity of the east side of 2682 West Main Street. Whereas the Village of Wapsters Falls submitted a claim to their insurance carrier and whereas the village insurance carrier denied the claim due to the retaining wall was not being listed as covered under the policy. Whereas the village board and village attorney dispute this denial of claim and whereas the village board, after due deliberation, finds that it is in the best interest of the Village of Wapsters Falls to defend its interest and hire an attorney to bring a declaratory judgment against, action against the insurance carrier to compel them to provide coverage for the aforementioned damaged retaining wall. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wapsters Falls hereby authorizing, authorizes the hiring of an attorney to bring a declaratory judgment against the village insurance carrier to compel them to provide coverage for the damaged retaining wall located in the vicinity on the east side of 2682 West Main Street in the Village of Wapsters Falls. I need a motion to approve the hiring.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Take it, Adam.
I'll just do the little lie.
I'll be the third this time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, I think that's-
I will, I'll solicit bids.
We'll call vote, Mayor Serino.
Aye.
Trustee Huber.
Aye.
Trustee Neznick.
Aye.
Trustee Ruffin.
Aye.
Trustee Ponti.
Aye.
Trustee Lorisella.
Aye.
Trustee Sadadi absent. Carrie.
Mayor, I just want to comment on that. I will, I will reach out to some firms in an effort to get some bids together for the village board's consideration and I will come forward with those and you guys can decide at a later, later date as to who you'd like to hire or if you'd like to talk to them first and make them available to the board. But that should, but since it's a future litigation matter or possibly a future litigation matter, that would have to take place at, at an executive session. I will try to persuade the carrier in a very stern and hopefully well-written letter to, to take the coverage on because I think we do have a compelling case for that. And if that is successful and it has, you know, I, I've been able to persuade them once or twice before, but if I am successful, then we won't have to obviously go through the hiring of an outside firm for this litigation.
Okay.
All right. A discussion about codification, master plan and building code.
This one's for the attorney?
Yeah, so the comprehensive plan, which was drafted by Lisa, by Michelle Gregg, who's a consultant that we've used in the past, as well as Lisa Cobb, who's an attorney in my firm. in my firm. Um, it is approximately a hundred and thirty pages long, and I had provided a link to, um, Village Clerk Carge. I had asked him to, um, to, uh, actually, um, get, get this to a professional printer, because it has a lot of color, color pages and maps in it. And, um, I wanted to circulate the, this version to the board first for discussion, and I'd like to also possibly get a workshop together so that we can get these consultants to come in, and you could ask questions and clarifications and things like that, and we could do an internal, um, revision possibly of the document before we go to a public hearing. We have to have two public hearings in this matter, uh, for, for public, um, uh, comment, so. So I, 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 I thought that that process would probably, um, it would, it would, it would shorten the, uh, the entire process if we internally, you know, got a working document to give to the public, all right? So, and, and you understood the past, you know, the, the text, the change, you had an opportunity to talk to the consultants, so I thought that that would be the best way to go about doing, um, the upcoming comprehensive plan, uh, in tackling that task.
As well as the codes, correct?
As well, as well, the codes as well, but they're not ready.
The codes are what, twenty-five pages?
I don't know what the, how many pages they are, but they're, they're gonna be ready shortly.
I took the, I downloaded it to a thumb drive and took it to Minuteman Press this morning, and they'll have it ready early next week.
So it's gonna be bound right for you?
It'll be bound and spiral.
So your version will be bound in spirals?
In color.
Ooh.
Rolled out.
Nice.
Lot of green.
Oh yeah, everything.
Lot of green for this town.
Um, it's, it's necessary, but it will also be, uh, a, a version that will be the subject of, of a public hearing will be on the, on our website as well. So I'll, I'll, I'll send a memo, um, kind of detailing what to expect and, and the, uh, the game plan, the checklist, so to speak, for that task.
Well, all I'm gonna say to that is, if it's ready, and, and it's gonna be ready next week-
Yeah.
This month, you have five Wednesdays, so you could have one of the public hearing on the oddball Wednesday.
No, we can't have a public hearing yet. What we can do is we could have-
You gotta advertise it.
Oh, you can have the, you can have a meeting with the consultants, though.
We could have a meeting with the consultants and with, uh, with the board, but it would have to be open to the public, so we'd have-
Yeah, okay.
All right, but it would be here, maybe we could do a five o'clock meeting, and the consultants can come in and, you know, we can maybe knock out our comments, or you got, have your questions ready, and we could discuss it.
Okay.
And after the revisions are made internally, then we have a working product to get to the pub, give to the public.
Are you doing that on the twenty-ninth?
No, that would be the-
What?
It would have to be either the week before, or it'd have to be the week after for the, kind of like the, our team to meet.
So, so your team is gonna meet first, and then we're gonna schedule a hearing?
Correct.
Okay. Well, you're, you're running out of runway already for the month of September.
Well, you have, you have the twenty-second.
And you need ten days to have schedule for the public hearing. So that'll be October.
Well, no, no.
There have to be two public hearings.
But, well, it'd be October, then.
Yeah, it's gonna be in October.
Yeah, they'll both be in October.
We don't, we don't even have a working, a work product.
But, well, if everything went perfect, if, uh-
It won't go perfect.
You could then do it on the first, you might be able to do it on the first Wednesday for, for the public hearing.
In October?
Yeah.
Sixth?
Yeah.
And then another one on the thirteenth, which is-
That's a board meeting.
Which is your regular meeting anyway.
Right.
You know, there has to be-
You need working time in between.
You need, there has to be sufficient time in between public hearings.
So you do it on the odd week after?
No, there has to be a week on advertising.
We gotta advertise both.
Two weeks?
It's probably gonna have to be successive months.
You might be able to do it on the sixth of October and the twentieth of October.
No, I'm thinking about, I'm thinking the twentieth of October and the following month.
Okay.
That's realistic.
That gives you more time to-
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this gonna be on the village website also?
The working copy?
The working copy.
You want the working copy on the website?
Once all of our internal comments, and we, we've worked through the kinks, and we, yes.
Not till you're done.
Not till we're done.
Not till we're done.
So do you want me to advertise a, a workshop meeting for the consultants and everyone?
I would like that.
For what day?
I, let's tentatively put, uh, on September twenty-two, if that's all right with everyone, at five o'clock, Wednesday.
That's a Friday, oh, September twenty-second?
Yeah, it's, it, yeah.
And that's open to the public?
Yes.
At five o'clock?
It would be open to the public, only because it has to be open to the public, but-
What time?
Hopefully you wait, you know.
Five.
Okay. All right, I'll set that up.
But you, the, the, the rules of procedure will, will be set that there will be no public comment at that time, and they can observe and watch, that's about it.
It'll just be those two.
Why do they have comments?
Not even quite.
You can be seen and not heard.
Public hearings, you're gonna have two public hearings where the public can come forward and comment.
Yeah, this is just the one with the consultants.
The workshop.
The workshop with the consultants, it's not the public hearing.
Well, he said the public hearing will be open, but-
Yeah. That'll be in October, November.
Yeah, that's not the one in September, it's the one in October and perhaps November.
So you can watch it, and then you can comment at another meeting?
Okay, I guess that's the, so you, you want a, a schedule for the twenty-second?
Yeah.
Okay.
I also, by the way, I, I wanted to make one comment, and, um, the new, the governor and the state legislature, um, passed some reform laws in an emergency session last week, one of which affects us, and that is authority to hold remote public meetings, um, into next year, so that, what we did last year during the pandemic was, we had Zoom meetings in lieu of, um, in-person meetings, uh, maybe, so that was, uh, that, that has been, that extended now, it, it's reinstated and now expire on January fifteen, twenty-twenty-two. So what we can do is possibly have a remote meeting with respect to, um, you know, this, these code revisions and, and the mass, and the, uh, comprehensive plan, if need be. For those who can't make it, maybe they can, we can set up a mechanism where they can participate that way, so let's just keep that in mind.
Okay.
All right. The next item is a discussion about trash containers at Ten Market Street. Trustee LaRisella.
Yeah, so, um, I was called by Brian Murphy, um, who, uh, told me that the applicant to rebuild the Ten Market Street, in case anyone's not clear as to where that is, that's where Marshall's Deli was for many years that we burnt that fire. So the applicant, uh, apparently formally requested that we provide in writing, um, what, he, they asked if he could, if we could use the, if he could use village property to store his garbage. I asked Brian Murphy what his opinion was, is it, he and I shared the same opinion, which is no, we should not allow that. Apparently, the applicant would like that to be the same answer, 'cause he doesn't actually, if he, there was a, a conditional approval on him beginning work. Uh, I've since spoken with Attorney Wallace, who told me that that was not exactly correct, and that this was, this resolution did not need to take place. Speaking with Brian Murphy, just to say, hey, Brian, I did what was asked, I spoke to some of the trustees, I happened to speak with, with Attorney Wallace, so he could draft this letter, so we could kind of vote on it, push it along. Attorney Wallace told me that was not something that needed to happen. Inspector Murphy said, no, it has to happen, that's what the conditional approval was, so I'm just kind of, again, in a situation where I don't really know what's happening, other than one person's asking me to do this, one person's telling me this, and what needs to be done. If we need to vote on it, I asked, and I've spoken to several of you, and dependently, I'd like you to vote no, the applicant cannot utilize village property to store his garbage. I think once you do that, it also opens up a lot of opportunities for other people to expect the same concessions, but either way, there's no reason for it. Brian Murphy doesn't, doesn't want it to happen, and again, neither does the applicant. It actually would cause the applicant to have to go back before the planning board and start the whole process back over, and he would rather just start the building to happen, so what will happen is he will tell his tenants, his first four tenants, you need to take your trash, and you need to drive it around to the back of the building and put it in the receptacles back there, so unless I convey it incorrectly to Attorney Wallace, or something else has happened, I don't know where, where we're at, do we?
Which, which?
It's Marshall's Deli.
I understand, but what, what village property is he looking?
I think it's where the stairs are, or something, some little piece, uh, 'cause they used to use, they used to have this little hovel that they threw the garbage out in, there was just, there's no reason to do it.
We've had, uh, as, uh, our clerk has told you in the past, we've had notices of claim coming from that particular location, the less foot traffic, the better.
Right, so can I, so can I make a motion to send a letter to the applicant stating that the board does not allow him to use village property to store his garbage, or for any other reasons, for that matter? Yes? Okay, did I make that motion?
I'll second it.
Yeah, I would second that, too.
Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie?
Good, thank you.
Okay.
So can that letter be drafted and sent over to Brian Murphy?
Do you want, do you want John to write that letter? Does it have to be a letter, or can I certify the minutes?
I was told it needs to be in writing, whatever that means.
Well, I'll give it to him in writing, it'll, like I always do, I'll certify the minutes of that-
Perfect.
-vote you just made.
Wonderful.
And that'll be adequate, and I'll do that, too.
Thank you.
This, um, next item is a discussion about opting in or opting out of the legal marijuana sales in the municipality. This is huge. I suggested to the mayor that maybe someone who had a lot of knowledge in this particular subject discuss it with the board. I'm aware of it, I've attended meetings with Dutchess County supervisors and mayors and spent several hours talking about this particular topic, and there's a lot to it.
Well, the supervisor of, of, uh, the Grange is probably, of all the supervisors, the most knowledgeable.
Correct.
Maybe, maybe Mayor Rollison and the city of Poughkeepsie, but I think he's a distant second.
I think you should bring somebody in that's knowledgeable, 'cause there's a lot to it.
Yeah, I definitely agree, and, uh, we're gonna have to have a public hearing with respect to this particular topic as well, and we have a time limit, and we can't time out on it. If we do nothing, by the end of the year, we have until December thirty-first to opt in or opt out, if we do nothing, we're considered to be opting in, that means a, uh, a retailer, um, would have a right to come into the village as a right. But, right now, we're doing, obviously, zoning amendments, so these zoning amendments would need to be addressed so that a location can be affixed in the event that either the board or the voters decide on this issue to opt in. There's a lot of tax implications, a lot of tax money at stake.
Well, the, the real issue is if you opt out, you can never get back in. If you opt in, you can choose of the items available, what you want.
Can you spot zone, can you target, you know?
No, I'm talking about the product line that could be sold.
Right, but, but on top of that, are you able to say like, well, it could be on-
It's a commercial establishment.
You, there's two things, there's two parts to it, it's, one's a retail cannabis dispensary, and the second part is it, is onsite consumption.
Right.
All right, there is a way to adopt both. There's a way to adopt one and not the other. Okay, but there's a process, it has to-
No, I understand that, but if my question, if I could ask it, is, is there a way to let, say like, it can be on Route nine corridor, but it can't be in the, you know-
Near the junior high.
-street proper, or, you know, you might, you might be okay with people being able to drive to these places, you might not be okay with like, people walking in library and having to walk by.
I, I, as long as it is reasonable in scope? Absolutely, and that's exactly what you should be thinking about, to be honest with you. But it probably should be a Route nine, you know, type of, of business.
Okay, great.
So I don't know if you wanted to bring somebody in?
Yeah, would you like to invite somebody? Next month? I think that would be good.
Or at the end of this month?
End of this month would be great, if you can.
You wanna talk to, uh-
I'll try to reach out to, uh-
Alan's pretty really good, he's very knowledgeable.
From the Grange.
Alan Bell.
Bell, Bell. Okay.
Or he may recommend someone, but, um, he's the one that seemed to me to be the most knowledgeable.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna-
Margaret Walker from the county attorney's office has also reached out to me. I, 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 I think she might be a good source of information as well.
Well, I, I think it's, uh, a no-brainer, uh, that you have to opt in and then choose what, what will be available.
And where?
And where, because if you opt out, you never get the opportunity to, uh-
How absurd is that, right? It's like, what a broken, what a broken thing.
But, all I can tell you, all I can tell you is, the city of Great Barrington in Massachusetts makes a million dollars a year on tax revenue.
So, right, that's a lot for-
Depends on how big the city is.
I never thought Great Barrington was that big. But that tells you that people, I know two people from around here who go up there to get it.
Don't look at us. I go bowling, yeah.
Well, the good thing about it is, if you buy it that way, you know it's safe, but if you buy it on the street corner, you don't know what's with it.
That's true. That's true.
All right, so you're gonna, Mayor, you're gonna reach out to one of the attorney, or I will-
Yeah.
Or the supervisor?
Yeah.
Okay, the last item on the printed agenda is approval to hire a grounds custodian. The pay rate would be the same as the, uh, weed harvester, is eighteen dollars an hour. It would be seasonal, ninety days. I'm not sure what you wanna establish as hours, and who the individual would report to.
Okay, so hold it here, so it's a seasonal.
To, um, clean up the parks routinely.
This came about based on the-
This came about based on the need for the garbage being taken out in and out of the parks. The little jobs that are around the parks that need to be addressed, that haven't been addressed, uh, that we'd had to outsource at larger amounts of money per hour for. So it's kind of like a test run with it being seasonal.
Okay, so this is seasonal, and what did you say, it's ten to twelve hours a week?
Ten to twelve hours a week.
And what was the other point?
Eighteen dollars an hour.
Oh, eighteen dollars an hour.
And who would he report to?
Okay, well, I think, I think you have a park and a rec guy, a woman on one. So I think he, they report to Ann Ponte and, and he reports to Kevin. We already got a job, Kevin and I got a job for this, for this custodial person down at the boathouse, right Kev?
Yep.
So, uh, I think he reports to either Ann or, or Kevin, or both, equal say. There one parks, one's rec.
I think John gets a lot of requests here and there, so if you could either pass those on to Kevin, or John could be part of the?
That goes without saying.
I al, I already have a list for him.
We can make John a part also, I mean.
Yeah, I, I work very closely with Beth Devine, and she has given me a list of things that he can do right off the bat.
Well, there's, there's other parks too, that needs to be?
I know, oh, no, she won't consume all this time, but there's some stuff that he can chip away at.
Yeah, it is.
The other question was, if you're all, you all like that?
Well, I, I, listen, I just don't want, I just don't want one person gobbling up all the hours.
Yeah, that's correct.
Because Vets Park is used a lot, and I know Mizzier is our?
Temple, Temple's used.
I'll say Park, but for?
Is he gonna be strictly parks, or is he gonna be a AU?
AU.
No, I'd say parks.
AU.
Cause the AU, AU ends up?
I mean, I got?
Other departments, so we hired them for parks, so I'd say we keep them in parks.
Alright, well?
You don't need an AU at other departments.
As the building manager, I have a lot of things that I need done, and I don't have blockdo anymore, so.
I think that's gonna depend on too, I mean, in the, if, if we have extra time, absolutely, we can definitely utilize them for AU. I mean, those are important, those are important things to get done, so.
Okay, I will work with Kevin and Ann, and we'll work it out together. Okay.
So you need a motion?
We didn't even mention the name yet.
Well, I could, yeah.
His name is, uh, last name is Barry, Timothy. So we need approval to hire Timothy Barry to be the grounds custodian, pay rate of eighteen dollars, seasonal right now, ninety days, ten to twelve hours a week, he will be managed by Kevin Huber, trustee Ponte and myself.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Second it.
Alright, before we vote on it, and he's a retired local 21 steam fitter and plumber, so. Better help out on the bathrooms at Vets, and the bathroom at the boathouse.
Now, one other question, will he have a vehicle?
I don't think we have one right now.
We had one, Mark used the one from the building department.
Well, you got the other guy working for us now, so he's using it.
Oh. Well?
I thought they had two pickup trucks.
Well?
I always got two, but I think both of them are broke down.
We have a new, we have a new planning car coming, so that'll free up one of those cars.
Yeah, so the answer is no, we don't have a vehicle.
Not at the moment, but we should have one once the planning vehicle comes in, something else will come up.
I would think he might only have the jockey at the, at the start between?
Planning department is using a, Brian Murphy's. His vehicle is an old car.
So he's gotta use his own vehicle.
Worse come to worse, worse come to worse, we give him mileage.
We make a motion on that then tonight, this way we don't have to be surprised later on?
Yeah, can we pay him mileage until we get a vehicle for him?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Second it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie. Okay, that concludes the printed portion of the agenda.
I have a couple things, if I may, mayor.
Sure.
So, last week, I noticed something in Franny Rees Park, and I, it was later in the afternoon, so I didn't have time to contact Brian Murphy, I met up with Pete somehow, I forgot why, but anyways, besides the point, there's a dumpster.
Big arm and?
In the Franny Rees parking lot, it's a taxpayers parking lot, it's blocking two spots. Uh, they gave him permission for the last time, it was supposed to be out by the weekend, and it was, because of the holiday weekend, and today it's back. I don't think that dumpster should be on village property, because we just talked about 10 Market Street.
Which dumpster is it?
Recycle depots.
It's the people next, they're trying, they're doing work.
Twenty-six ninety-two West Main Street, so it's the yellow house next door to the Franny Rees parking lot.
So it has nothing to do with that lot?
Nothing to do with that lot, nothing to do with the village, it's all?
No, the house next to it, for Brian supposedly located it, but I had a question about whether or not?
I, I take it, but I'm not sure if this week.
Also, we don't know if we, if there's any certificate of insurance, or if we've been made, held harmed, or being held, held harmless if someone gets hurt.
Correct, I know they laid plywood down, so don't ruin the blacktop, but it's just, I don't think it's right.
I agree.
Have our, have an outside hole or put a dumpster there, it's not the village's, it's not?
No, it's not, it's property, it's a village's.
Property.
They're trying to renovate their house, they're cleaning it out, so where would they?
I think they're renovating it.
So where would they put a dumpster?
They have a driveway.
They don't have a driveway, do they?
I thought they had a driveway.
I don't think that they do.
No, I don't think so.
And you can't put it in the street.
Right, the, the, the issue would be, even if they could do it, how, have they, do we have, are we held harmless, and is there, is there insurance? That's really the main, main issue.
If we, if we'd like, we could probably give them permission for day usage, not overnight usage. Cause there's still people that use that parking lot, and believe it or not, that parking lot has been, that parking lot's been busy lately, very busy. A lot of cars parking in there, which is great for the village. And I just think, you know, we're taking up two spots and, or maybe four spots, two on the other side, but if somebody backs into, who's held responsible? Is it us, is it the, the carting company?
Right.
So.
Okay.
And I got one more thing. Uh, I, I forgot the, I don't have the place in this packet, but we brought up Mizzier Park with the trees that are broken in the, in the trees?
Yes.
That we wanna trim. Can we just have our tree guy do the job?
Well, we were supposed to get quotes.
Alright, so we can, I guess?
I thought we agreed on getting quotes.
We have a, a, an estimate from one contract.
Because there are, hang on a second. It's already written down here, in Mizzier Park, there are fifteen broken trees. And in Vets Park, there are eleven broken trees. And winter's coming, and these things being high up in the air, we're on notice.
So who, how do we, how do we?
We gotta fix it.
You gotta fix it now that you're on notice.
Yep, so.
You have a prior notice, you're it.
So we're not gonna get any other quotes to do the job? We talked about that two weeks ago, that we were gonna, someone was gonna go, and I don't know exactly who it was supposed to be, but Pete was gonna walk with them, whoever, we're gonna advertise and try to get two more quotes for prices. That's an extreme, it's, it's a very, it's a, it's a big chunk of money.
Yeah.
And?
Right now, it's a big chunk of money, could be more, could be less.
It's three years.
Could be a million if it falls on somebody.
Well, then I don't know why we would have agreed two weeks ago to get quotes and not get the quotes.
I don't know why either, I mean, we have a tree guy who paid time and material for.
Well, did Pete get the two other quotes?
I don't think he got the two other quotes, but?
Why? If it's such a dire emergency, why did we not get the quotes?
I, I don't, I don't know, I can't answer that question.
Must have been an error. Must have been human error.
Oh, I, I'm just, I'm just asking.
I know, I'm just thinking that's, that's my, would be my answer.
If that's the case, then I will, I will contact Pete tomorrow, let him know, see if he can get two extra quotes.
Who did we expect to get these quotes?
I guess Pete?
Yeah, I believe we talked about, that it was important that Pete personally walked around so that we can compare apples to apples, yes. So we can compare, when we get more quotes from people, that Pete would walk around with them, so we can compare apples to apples and job to job, as opposed? Okay, so that's what I thought it was.
Your memory is a hundred percent.
So.
Alright, well, that's the case then, that's the case.
Well?
Time and materials don't count in this job.
Well, then why didn't we agree to it last week?
I don't know why we agreed to it last week, I'm just saying. It's just, we, we, we put out the bid every year, times and material.
But he, he does, he, he, that's just for a specific job, I don't, is that time, is he time and material for everything we do? That's just for a specific?
You're saying right now, we have somebody that was willing to, to make the properties safe?
Yeah.
Yes.
We got one quote.
He's the contractor for the village.
He does our, he does our?
I know, but I'm saying?
But his father does the trees.
He's prepared to move forward to secure these properties and make them safe for the residents with the existing contract that was acceptable to us when we said yes.
No.
No, 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 that's above and beyond the contract.
This is totally above and beyond the contract.
I know that, but we know how much it is, we've, we've already agreed to that?
No, they didn't agree to his price yet.
He gave us the quote.
So it falls under the time and material, correct?
Which we've agreed to in other jobs, correct?
Yeah.
That, that's my point, I don't, I don't mean specifically here, we've agreed to it at other times. I just wonder if time is of the essence, how long will it take to get other quotes? There's a big huge storm coming in tonight, and I worry, you know, once someone, it just makes me very nervous when someone says there's, someone could get hurt in a moment's notice with these things, and then you, I just worry.
Well, I'm just reminding everybody that two weeks ago, we agreed to have two quotes, two additional quotes made, and that we were going to have
So, so?
Our highway superintendent do that to get us more quotes and?
I don't disagree, what I'm, what I'm wondering is, do you say, well, I made a mistake, and we didn't see that through correctly, but we can't risk, we have to wait, you know, we have to assess the risk, do we wanna, do we think we'd be okay, or? But, why is that funny?
I, 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 I would hate to sit here and make that, do I think I'm gonna be okay, that's not something I wanna?
No, I know, but that's what we're doing right now, and he just, I haven't looked at the thing, so I don't know. I just know on my property, if something looks like it might fall on someone's head, I wanna take it down as quick as possible. And we may have made a mistake and not, and didn't see through what we originally intended to two weeks ago, but maybe we should just take trustee Huber's suggestion and say, alright, well, I, I, I mean, does this make sense? Does anyone agree or disagree with you?
I agree.
I mean, if you wanna wait for the things, how, how long will it take to get the quotes?
A couple days, a couple weeks, who knows?
I mean, you?
I don't know who he's gonna contact, he contacted Basely, right, is that where you got your first one from?
Contacted Basely.
Well, then he's gotta go out and get two more.
Maybe we can just, you know, say, we got some property?
I'll call him tomorrow and see what he can do.
Yeah.
And then, I think we'll just get rid of the time material they've contracted, that's, I mean, that's?
Well, no, Basely gave the time.
No, no, that's just my opinion.
Right, no, no.
You, you got something, and you're, now you're not using it.
I agree.
No, he gave, he gave?
I understand very clearly.
He gave his estimate, and to show his cost, he said what it entailed.
Yeah, I understand.
In his best guess.
I get that, I, I get it.
So, I, I wouldn't say it's a time and material.
It's not time and material.
It's, he listed? Kevin, he listed five men on one of them, and he says, he gives the day, he gives the truck rate. So it's not time and material, he says he's gonna have five men, he's gonna have the, and then he charges us up, out for the truck. Time and material?
It was two thousand dollars for the day, he's here for three days.
How much?
Because he did it already.
I think it was two thousand dollars a day, and he'd need to be here for three days. I think, don't hold me to that, do not hold me to that number, honestly.
To do all these trees?
To do all these trees.
It was twenty-seven thousand dollars.
I thought it was twenty-three, but yeah, it was twenty-something dollars.
It was twenty-seven thousand dollars.
That's correct.
You got from six thousand. Yeah, that's?
That's not twenty-seven thousand.
It was a lot.
If it's two thousand dollars a day, two, uh, six thousand dollars.
For three days, for three days.
That's six thousand dollars, so we're twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Then you got the truck rental.
His total cost was twenty-seven thousand dollars.
So it's, it's not time and material, because time and material indicates, the connotation is there that you're paying by the hour. He puts an hourly rate, but it's eight hours. So it means they're gonna cut for eight hours and chip for eight hours. Even if they got all the trees down.
It's twenty-seven thousand dollars, and our highway department shouldn't bring it down to our holding station. They should bring it away, they're bringing it to our holding station. So I don't think it was?
I mean, was that the quote, was that?
No, it wasn't, I, I don't think twenty-seven thousand dollars was not a quote for trees.
I thought it was twenty-seven.
It was twenty-seven thousand dollars.
I don't think so.
I, I still got it in my body, it's in my car.
It's twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Twenty-seven hundred, maybe.
No.
No.
It was?
Well, then if it's that much, then I don't want it in our, I don't want it in our holding station, they need to take it away then.
Then that's why we, I wanted to get more quotes, because it was twenty-seven thousand dollars.
I, I agree with that.
Yeah, so just, we'll have to lean on Mr. Pajee tomorrow to get the rest of it?
I'll give him a call tomorrow morning, and see if he can call two other people.
But you know, it might make sense then, if there is, again, I'm just going by what you said, some serious areas, you should also, when you ask him to do that, you should suggest some of the team members go down there and tape off any areas that people need to be away from. If there's, if there's branches that could fall on somebody's head, maybe have them, right, rope it off until we figure it out. I, I don't know, I can't see, but you have this picture.
I got a black and white picture, that's all.
Very. Okay, so, do you want?
I'll call Pete tomorrow morning and see if he can call two more people.
Okay.
Have him call, not see, have him.
See how he makes out, if not, we'll get the clerk and scour through and see if we can get another one.
Seven thousand, another quote, there's no way?
No, 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 he told, he was very clear to me, Pete wants to handle anything that has to do with trees. Okay, okay, then let Pete do it then. I used to do it, he said, no, he wants to do it, I said, fine, my guess, and it didn't happen, so. Okay.
Cause he used our guy, so he did it.
But he was supposed to get three quotes.
At the last meeting, you said to Pat Sadati was here, to have him get two more quotes. You didn't get them, that's all.
That's all, okay.
So.
Anything else for unprinted?
Well, we also have special events on the eighteenth, in the village, Festival of the Falls.
Right.
Which is always a good time.
Yeah, we have a nine eleven.
Oh, September eleventh, see, we brought that, yeah, yeah.
Oh, we said that, alright.
We did that at the beginning of the meeting, and September eleventh, at seven PM at Mizzier Park, on nine eleven.
Yes, Cindy.
I did, I know, oh. I did send you all an email about it as well, um, that Habitat has a group of ERICOR workers coming down to do a project in Vets Park on Saturday morning, they'll be there, um, so they have the specs, um, they do need to get in to measure, if I give you a?
I'm gonna, he's giving me the key, and I'm gonna?
Okay, any chance you can meet them down there at eleven tomorrow morning? Because they need to measure stuff again, just say, for materials, they need to measure, so they do it. Eleven o'clock, I'll meet you down there too and introduce you to them, so. But I wanted to expand on it to let you know that?
What's the project until?
They're going to clean up, they're gonna power wash the buildings, the two buildings, they're going to clean up the inside of it, they're putting some extra shelving up, they're putting shelving upstairs in the garage, they're going to organize all of the stuff that we have up there into holidays? They're going to organize all of the, uh, stuff that we have up there into holidays and stuff. I asked them to pull down the stuff from Halloween and fall, cause Beth mentioned that they were looking to do something for Halloween, so they'll pull that stuff down and leave it downstairs for them to do. Um, there's a little memorial to, um, Luciano, I'm trying to think of the kid's name, I can't remember. It was the young gentleman that was killed in the fire at Domino's. Yes, um, they're going to clean up that whole little monument area to him, it needs a new plaque.
Right.
Um, cause it's cracked, so, and, uh, so it needs a new plaque that-
We're trying to get the name of the company that it was originally-
Okay, the edge class, I mean, it almost looks like something that they might have gotten from fracture, if you're, know what that is.
The plaque that was there in that clump of trees is not a good spot for it.
No.
I suggest they're getting a wall plaque and mount it on the clubhouse wall. It doesn't have to be that glass thing that gets hit by rocks and everything else.
Well, I think that was the family's, uh, yeah, they wanted to have like a little garden for their kid, I think that was-
They're, they're gonna clean it up, I believe they're gonna do some planting in there and stuff. They're also gonna take care of, there's a, a tree that looks half-dead, dead right there, right in the front there, it looks like it got split as it came through. They're gonna just trim it up a little bit, and make it look a little nicer and stuff too. But I just wanted to explain that they're, this is a commitment they're making to the village, because they're doing two buildings up, two more houses up on Pajy Terrace, so there'll be several projects that they'll be doing over the next, you know, couple of years, because it's part of their community revitalization program. Um, there's one involving a veteran that I mentioned to John before, that they're looking to do, uh, something for a particular veteran in the village that might be in need of a ramp, or some kind of, you know, work on their house, or whatever, that they would like to do. But, um, I did have a conversation with them about the basketball court, and, um, they think that they can resolve our issue, and that they would pay for all the materials and everything to get it done, so, just wanted to, this is a bonus for us, but in any event, there, there's gonna be a photo op on Saturday, if, you know, I will try and get you a specific time when they will be there to do it. They usually have a, a startup ceremony, so I'm guessing it's about maybe nine o'clock, nine-thirty. It's basically because they are a faith-based organization, that they will have, uh, you know, somebody doing there to do a, you know, a benediction, or some kind of thing like that, and they'll just have a, a few words talking about the project, that's all. But they would like a photo op, they would put that up on their Facebook page, but also in the papers and stuff too, so, part of their commitment to America.
I tend to go to the town of Wapengers.
Hmm?
I, I, go to the town of Wapinger nine eleven.
Okay.
So.
I'll, I'll call and ask, I'll find an exact time for you.
I'll be there around nine o'clock.
Okay, I will ask and see if I can get them to push that off until a little bit later then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I would just add that on September seventeenth, uh, on Friday, I believe, it's a Friday, Rolling Thunder will be at the, uh, MIA POW Park.
What time?
Pardon?
What time?
I think five.
Five o'clock.
Nice ceremony.
Yeah, five o'clock. And our ceremony is at seven, on nine-one-one.
Anything else for beyond the printed?
I have just one thing for executive session.
Okay, motion to go into exec?
Oh, act- actually, it's two.
A motion to go into exec?
I'll make it, second.
Trustee Ponte, Trustee Neznik, all in favor?
Aye.
Harry. She does, she does.